Saying the pledge of allegiance that will be led tonight by Councilmember Kathleen McIntyre. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's meeting will set the agenda for the 1,977th regular meeting, which will be a voting meeting and will take place on September 18th. That's when all of tonight's items will be officially voted on. Tonight you may hear my council colleagues offer motions in regards to approving, denying, or referring to a committee of the whole in regards to these matters. Those motions will carry over for consideration into the next regular meeting. If you'd like to participate in any of the agenda items tonight, please take note of the item being read and approach the podium on either side of the room when that item is called. You will then be asked to state your name and address for the record. We will start tonight's meeting by going to audience communication. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address the council on any items not on the agenda tonight? I see none. We will go to the council. Are there any announcements from the city council? Ms. McIntyre?
I was asked about the Here We Go 2.0, if there would be tickets at the door. And thank you, Mr. Varga, our chief of staff, or the mayor's chief of staff, for sending me a text to let me know that tickets will be available at the door, but they will be cash only.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre.
Vice President Toy?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I'd like to make kind of a sad announcement, which is that our former mayor, Mayor Dennis Wright, is facing some real serious challenges these days. And I would ask all of us to say a little prayer for our former mayor Dennis Wright. He did a great job while he was mayor for the four years. Lot of challenges here and there as any mayor, or any council, or anyone that works in city government would have. But he could use some extra prayers. A dear friend of mine ran into his wife, and so she said that perhaps people might remember him as a prayer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice President Toy. We send Mayor Wright, affectionately known by most people in Livonia just as Dennis, our best wishes, and we're always thinking about him, and we will make sure to include him in our thoughts and prayers. Anybody else on the council? Seeing none, we will jump right into the agenda. That is number one, new business, a block party request from Anthony Mitchell for Sunday, September 24, 2023, from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Louise Street between Richland and Orgeon Streets. Is Mr. Mitchell here, Anthony Mitchell? Come on up to the podium, please, sir. Please tell us your plans for the block party.
Good afternoon. This is the first annual block party for Devon Air. I've been living there since 2014. A lot of neighbors I live next to said they used to have block parties 15, 20 years ago, but they stopped. The person actually passed away a long time ago and the block party stopped. So I was actually took the lead on this because I thought we had a perfect location right between Orange Law and right between Richland. Louise Street is maybe 50 yards, maybe 40 yards, and there's four driveways on that street, one being mine. I already talked to all three of the other neighbors. They're completely on board with it and waiting for your approval before I start handing out flyers and renting everything that needs to be rented.
Thank you, sir.
And we're looking forward, oh, excuse me.
Oh, you're good.
And we were possibly looking forward from the 11 to 5, 6 o'clock. It's September 24th during the Lions game, so we were planning on having a projection, eight-foot projection screen TV, food, bounce houses for the kids, and hopefully it should be a good time because the Lions look really good this year, and everyone's really excited about it.
Kool-Aid tastes good.
What's that?
Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm a true believer, and I think the Lions will be a Super Bowl victor one day, although my father, he's been counting on those Lions for a long time, so we'll see what happens. But anyways, I'm in support, think it's a great idea. I know you mentioned it's your first annual block party. I would like to let you know that there is a $500 grant program that the city offers for community-style events. President Jali actually helped make that become possible some years ago. So for the future, when you're second and third, et cetera, try to apply for that grant and try and take advantage of those dollars. With that being said, I'd like to offer an approving on consent. There's no objection from my colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. I see no objection from the council. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak on item number one? I see none. Thanks for taking this on, and I guess this is your responsibility going forward, huh? No?
I hope so.
All right. Well, good job. Thank you. Good luck.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Item number two is a waiver petition from the Planning Commission for petition 2023060209 submitted by Leo Sovey Building, Inc., requesting a special waiver use approval to develop a planned residential development consisting of five buildings and a total of 11 residential dwelling units on properties at 35755 and 35841 Plymouth Road, located on the south side of Plymouth between Yale and Levane in the northeast quarter of Section 32. Notification was sent to Leo Sovey in regards to this item. Is Mr. Sovey here?
I represent Mr. Sovey.
Okay. If you'd come on up to the podium, I'm going to ask Mr. Toramina to give us an overview of this project.
Sir? Mr. President, this, again, is a request for a planned residential development. This is the former Cochrims Farm Market on Plymouth Road, the south side between Yale and Levane. The property is about 1.93 acres, so just under two acres in size, 334 feet of frontage on Plymouth Road. The zoning, as you can see, is C2 general business. The special option for planned residential developments does allow residential construction on commercial zone property, subject to special waiver use approval, which you are considering this evening. Adjacent to the property on either side are commercial uses. You have Zax Car Wash, there's an auto repair, and U-Haul business on the east side. Then there are some single-family homes that are part of the Elmira Court subdivision located immediately to the south of this property. Those are zoned N1 neighborhood. And then directly across the street is the Ford Transmission Plant. So the project would involve the development of 11 dwelling units. There would be a total of five buildings, so four would be duplexes, and then there would be one triplex. Access, as you can see from the plan, would be provided by a 24-foot wide drive coming from Plymouth Road that's centrally located on the property. That then tees into another road that extends in an east-west direction, forming a T-street pattern. None of the driveways for the homes would have direct access on Plymouth Road. Units 1 through 7 would have access to the street, which is along the south side of the development, and then units 8 and 11 would have access from the street that extends south from Plymouth Road. On the south side, excuse me, on the floor plans that were submitted show the units being a total of about 1,600 square feet. There are one, one-and-a-half-story units, including three bedrooms, living dining area, kitchen, two-and-a-half baths, laundry mechanical, and then one-car attached garages. The plan meets the maximum lack coverage requirement. The ordinance specifies that the building area cannot cover more than 35% of the lot. In this case, it's only 21%, so it fully conforms to that. The buildings indicated would be constructed out of brick and vinyl. The roofs, of course, would be peaked with asphalt shingles. New landscaping would be constructed throughout. This plan shows the landscaping as well as the retention system, which extends along the south side of the property, as well as the east side of the property. The Planning Commission is recommending approval of the plan with a few modifications. They would like to see additional tree plantings in the form of evergreens along the south side of the property, additional plantings within the retention basin and on the perimeter of the property on both sides, additional, a couple of parking spaces, and a turnaround in this area here on the northwest corner of the street, and then some PRDA styled improvements along the frontage of Plymouth Road. And so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So by way of process, because this is a waiver petition?
Correct.
Are we looking at this as a combined waiver and site plan approval?
Yes, you are.
So it's all one item?
That's correct.
Okay. For the petitioner, is there anything you'd like to add at this time?
Yeah. I was in contact with one of the residents, and I told him that I promised him that I would say this publicly, so that way he knows. He said him and some of the neighbors didn't like some of the trees in the back. They were old. So I, he asked if we would rip them all down and put arborvitae's in the back, and I said as long as, from permission from the city, we'd be more than happy to do that for him and the residents back there.
So that's not reflected on the plan, though, Mr. Toramina?
No, these changes are not reflected on the plan. They are specified conditions in the resolution that was adopted by the Planning Commission, so.
Okay. And I just ask that because I'm looking at the plan, and the retention area runs along the south side there. Would trees be able to be planted in that area?
Yeah, there are, they're showing some trees currently as part of the original landscape plan.
Okay.
But what is suggested is that there be additional evergreen trees provided along this area. There will be a ledge, a flatter area between the property line and the top of slope where that retention basin goes down. There should be sufficient area to do the plantings that have been mentioned.
Okay. And that is currently reflected in the Planning Commission approval?
That is correct.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks, Mr. Toramina. So just to clarify in simpler terms, essentially there is the retention area that goes down between the retention area and the property line, there's more of a flat space, and they're going to be removing some of those old dead trees, and they're going to replace them with new evergreens and arborvitae's and whatnot to provide more of a screening to those homes to the south?
Correct. There's some, if you take a look at the site, you'll notice that there are quite a few trees that run along that property line. Those would be removed. They're not all dead. There are still many living trees. But those would be removed and then replaced with new plantings. Correct.
Great. And then in terms of trash removal, since these are condos, this won't be like, won't be a dumpster enclosure somewhere, it'll be all individual trash pickup, like a normal residential dwelling?
That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Vice President Toy?
Thank you, if I may, the petitioner, or Mark, whoever. What kind of resale is this going to be on these?
Well...
Or not a resale, but, yeah, sorry about that. What are these going to sell for? How's that range?
We're looking the low to mid-3s.
3s?
Mm-hmm.
And are they three-bedroom with basement?
No basements. There's only a couple that have three bedrooms. Most of them are two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms. And the, how many duplexes were there? Was that four?
That's correct.
Yeah, four?
With 11 units total.
Okay. Do we have any duplexes in that area? I mean, I'm not familiar with duplexes in that area.
They're not really duplexes, they're condos.
Oh, they're condos, okay.
But when they're attached together, they're called duplexes.
Oh, is that what it is?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. That was a little confusing.
Yeah.
But, yeah, you know, that property's been there forever, and, you know, I appreciate the fact that you guys are going to develop it. It feels like we don't really have too many properties left in Livonia, so, you know, very desirable housing we need. Hopefully we get some young families to fill our schools up in those, and I'm going to offer an approving on it because I think it's very worthwhile, and I appreciate you bringing it forward to us. Thank you.
We'll do Mr. Barr, Ms. McIntyre, Mr. McCullough, then Mr. Morgan. So we'll go straight down the line here for those who haven't spoken yet. Mr. Barr, the floor is yours.
Mark, you listed off a number of things that the Planning Commission had recommended or requested. I don't remember what all they, all were. They sounded good when you said them. Is there anything binding to that? I mean, I see one item in the Planning Commission thing here that says the petitioner shall work with staff on plans to install additional landscaping. I think that's referring to some of it, but there's, the way I'm reading it, there's nothing binding with that in this resolution, is there, with those recommendations?
I would consider those binding.
You would?
That prior to any final engineering or permits being issued, that we would have to sign off on the final landscape plan, which will have to provide the additional landscaping, the additional off-street parking space or two, and the PRDA improvements along Plymouth Road.
Okay. That makes me feel a little bit better because I agree with every single one of those, and I was wondering if we needed to hold this up until we saw that, because we're not seeing that in the plan currently. But you're saying the way this reads now, it would require that approval from your department.
Yeah, and we can work with the engineer to show some of those features, if not all of those features, prior to your final vote in a couple of weeks, if that's what you would like to see.
And then the other question I have is, first of all, I appreciate, oh, sorry, two more questions, one quick one. How long has this property been baking? Do you know roughly?
Well, since I've been here for...
Okay.
25 years nearly.
So a long time.
It was used for Christmas tree sales every season.
Okay.
And if the farm market operated at any point in that time, it would have been the first couple of years I was here, and that was it. And they were, the buildings that were out there, I think, were very temporary in nature. They were not fixed buildings like you normally see, so they were shed-type buildings, as I recall.
So that, I actually don't think I need to ask my third question, I'll just make a comment. This is a weird place to be doing this when you first look at it. When you look at the businesses that are around there, it's just, it's odd. And yet, I think it's a really good example of just changing face of retail where, I've talked about this here before, where we are going to increasingly going to have to look at properties like this and think about turning them to residential, just because there's not the commercial need anymore. And this is just, this is amusing on my part. When you look along Plymouth Road along here, you don't have to go too far west, and you see a lot of little developments like this. Now granted, those are more closer to Heinz Park, and so that makes a little more sense. But I'm just wondering aloud if over the next 10, 20, 30 years, if we aren't going to see more of this along that western edge of Plymouth Road, just because I think that's the way things are going from a usage standpoint, so. Thanks.
And Mr. Barr, if I could comment on that, Mr. President? That is absolutely correct. This is one of the things that the master plan wanted to achieve is infill development, replacing some of these, the commercial properties with new forms of residential. So this really checks a box that we were looking to have done as part of the master plan moving forward. So we're really excited to see how this works, and if it does, if it possibly leads to more types of redevelopment projects from commercial to residential.
Ms. McIntyre?
This is, if I, in the notes, it looked like this is going to be a private road, so it will not get added under PA 51, right? This will never become our responsibility.
That's correct.
So there'll be, there'll be a fee, right? The residents will pay a, I forget what the term is, association fee that will take care of the trash removal and the snow and everything else, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. That's what I thought I understood.
Yeah, if I make to the chair, yeah, they'll have an HOA.
Got it.
They'll take care of all that stuff.
Thank you.
Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. No, I just want to, you know, I was looking at Google Maps, and there's a way to kind of start going back and back and back the years. It goes back to July 2007, and it looked like there was like a shack on the site. This has been like this for a long time. Now, our master plan shows creating harmony in the surrounding areas. This is dilapidated property, and I applaud what you're doing. Honestly, we have, you know, people are looking for housing, and this type of housing, I think, fits perfect. You know, now you could take it a little bit maybe east and hit the house of Denmark next, or whatever the flooring store is. But no, you know, I think this is, this fits the area. You've worked with the neighbors, and we're just happy that, to see this come forward. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, I think I'd like to say this is an excellent project. These are not going to be for rent, correct? They're there for sale?
No, they're all for sale.
Okay. I think this is an excellent project. This is exactly what I'd like to see in Livonia. This is going to be an asset to the area. It's going to be an asset to the city. And with the project, the way it looks, and the home layout, and everything that comes together, I think this is going to be a great addition. Yeah. Thank you very much, yeah.
Thank you. Is there any comment from the audience in regards to item number two? Sir, if you don't mind, you have a seat, please. Good evening, ma'am. Your name and address, please, for the record. You have two minutes.
Hi, Deb Christensen. I live right in that subdivision that we're talking about, behind Plymouth Road there. So I didn't know about this, and as a resident that lives behind that subdivision, in that subdivision, I'm wondering why. Like, I don't, I don't live on the street Elmira, the one that is going to be adjacent or butted up against this project, but I do live in that subdivision, so I don't know why we were not informed that something like this would happen. My concern, and my concern, and I, this is the first time that I'm seeing, I was going to come up here and say what kind of property is going to be here, and so I'm happy to hear that it's residential, that it's a one-story. You know, I'm happy to hear about that. I am concerned, though, about the retention pond, and if I were one of those residents living on Elmira Street and knowing that a retention pond is going to be like at the foot of my backyard, that would concern me as a resident. And that's what it sounds like from what I can see, from the prince. So it sounds like everybody's in favor of it, so it really doesn't matter what I think. So, thank you.
What are the notice requirements in regards to this project?
So this would show you the properties that were notified of the Planning Commission meeting. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. So those houses there in yellow were notified, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Clarification, I can't figure it out on my iPad. How much space is that flat area that we kind of referenced earlier? Because my understanding, retention, it's not necessarily a huge drop-off, it's a very gradual grade decline, so it's nothing that is excessive in nature or dangerous, so to speak. It's not like a ridge, but can we find out how many feet that is, so to speak?
Yeah.
Again, it's more of a hill. It's like a small little hill, and my understanding is this bio-retention area doesn't necessarily hold feet of water. It's more or less, when we experience high rainfalls, it will fill up a little bit and then slowly dissipate into the storm system. So it's not like there's a huge pool of water back there, so to speak.
Correct. So the final engineering has now been done. The depth is only about a foot, so you can see the area affected is about 15 feet wide. There is some distance, about five feet, between the property line and where that slope is, but it only drops down about a foot. So it's a very gentle slope. It's designed for the water to find its way into that swell. Mostly would seep into the ground. There would be, I believe, an ultimate outlet provided in the event that it does fill with water. But again, those final engineering drawings still need to be reviewed by the engineering division.
Okay. Anything else? If there's nothing else from the council and nothing else from the audience, I will note that we have an approving by Ms. Toy. Is there an objection to this being on the consent agenda? I see none. We'll place item number two on the consent agenda. We'll move on to item number three.
You know, Mr. Jali, I'd just like that to go on regular.
Okay.
Thank you.
Not a problem. Item two will be on the regular agenda. Item three is a site plan petition from the Planning Commission, petition 2023070806 submitted by Leo Sovey Building Company, LLC, requesting approval of the master deed, bylaws, and site plan to develop a site condominium, Sunset View, consisting of 11 single-family homes on the property at 30250 Morlock Avenue on the west side of Sunset Avenue between Fargo Avenue and Eight Mile Road in the northwest quarter of Section 2. Notification was sent to Leo Sovey. Mr. Toramina, can you give us an overview of this item as well?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, it's a request to develop an 11-unit site condominium that would be known as Sunset View. This site is on the west side of Sunset Avenue. This is south of Eight Mile Road and west of Merriman, excuse me, east of Merriman. The property is just under three acres in size. It's 2.82 acres. It has a depth of 132 feet by a length of 923 feet. A little bit about the history, it was in 2005 when this property was rezoned from RUF, Rural Urban Farm, to R3, one-family residential, and then one year later, in 2006, the city-approved Sunset View condominiums, which consisted of 10 conforming R3 lots. The project, which was done by a previous owner, was never developed, and in 2021, with the adoption of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance, the R3 district, as you recall, was eliminated, and it was replaced with the N2 district. And as a result, the minimum required lot width was reduced from 87, 80 feet down to 70 feet. Located across the street are 10 homes that are part of the Sunset subdivision. Sunset subdivision was planted in 1996, when the zoning at that time was R3. These lots all measure approximately 87 feet wide by 110 feet. The current zoning of Sunset subdivision is N2, the same zoning as this property. And then to the west are the Whispering Woods Apartments. To the south are some residential homes, also zoned N2, and to the north are some industrial properties. So the layout shows 11 conforming lots. The lots would all front on Sunset Avenue, which has a planted right-of-way width of 55 feet. Lots 1 through 10 all measure 70 feet by 132 feet, and then lot 11, which is the northernmost site, would measure 108 feet in width. So just to familiarize yourself with this plan, this is the existing street, Sunset Avenue, ends here in the cul-de-sac. These lots to the north are all part of the Sunset subdivision. The proposed lots are here on the west side, so the north side is on the left-hand side of this drawing, and west is the bottom part showing the proposed development. As you can see, stormwater would be managed in a bio-retention system that extends along the west side of all 11 lots. It also includes two common areas, one, which is on the north side of Unit 11, and then one, which is on the south side of Unit 1. These two basins at the north and south ends would be connected by this swell that runs along the rear of the property and adjacent to the multifamily development. In terms of landscaping, the plan shows one street tree per lot, as well as a combination of arborvitae's, service berries, white pines, and white oak trees surrounding the bio-retention system. There would be a continuous six-foot-high vinyl fence along the west property line that would separate the proposed homes from the apartment complex. And then this most recent plan that you're looking at shows a continuation of the sidewalk along the west side of Sunset. So the plan reviewed by the Planning Commission did not previously show the fence along the west side of the property, nor the trees along the area along the west side and the sidewalk. All of those items have been added to this plan. The one other item is the location of a monument sign. This plan does not show a monument sign, although one could be installed, most likely, in this, in this small common area on the corner of the detention basin, if the developer chooses to place a monument sign on the property. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So I'll get started here.
Sure.
The properties on the east side of Sunset and this new proposal on the west side of Sunset, was this all a single piece of property at one time?
Not to my knowledge. I do not believe, as I go back through the records, this site was developed completely separate from this. So I don't believe there was a, I don't have a record of any parcel split that occurred between these two, these two halves of the development, if you will. Again, this part was done in 1996 by a separate developer. There was talk at the time about developing this side of the street, or at least there being some property acquisition to make this a 60-foot right-of-way. However, that never, that never occurred.
So it seems strange that there would be two extremely long, narrow parcels like this situated, so, which makes me believe that at some point in time, they possibly were one piece of property. And I guess, looking at this, I mean, we've received a lot of emails, I think there's some residents in the, in the back here on this project as well. On its face initially, I'm not opposed to building like houses like there are on the east side of Sunset. I don't know why we would change the perspective and allow for 11. Wouldn't we want them to conform with the lots on the other side of the street as much as possible? to conform with the lots on the other side of the street as much as possible? That's my initial thought, because by my counting here, and counting's not my strong suit, right? But it looks like you could get eight similar-sized lots in what is currently proposed for eleven. And I mean, looking at this project in conjunction with the project we just, we just looked at, and it looks like there's some pretty good support from, from the council, that's a unique spot, that's an outside-the-box, new development of residential, we have the space here to demand and expect more by way of what the developer can do. So I guess from my perspective, I'm not against housing here, housing makes sense here, jamming in eleven that aren't going to match with what's on the other side of the street, that doesn't make sense to me. So with that being said, council colleagues, who's up next, Mr. Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark, I've got a few questions, Mr. Toramina. So in terms of the seventy-foot lots, my rationale here is that it's permitted zoning. Seventy-foot lots, it's zoned N2, so the reason for eleven lots is because that's exactly what the ordinance calls for, is seventy-foot lots.
Well, the ordinance calls for a minimum of seventy feet in, for the width, and 120 feet in the depth, and these lots meet those minimum requirements.
So they meet those minimum requirements, okay. And then when you factor in the two bio-retention areas, I was trying to figure out the, the size, one I think is, the far north one is wider than the far south one, so I think it's reasonable to figure out that if those two weren't there, maybe you can kind of shift around the land a little bit, but since he's proposing two large retention areas along the sides, that kind of squeezes a little bit tighter, so you can, you can do seventy-foot lots and, and again, meet the ordinance and meet the permitted zoning application here.
Yeah, I'm not sure I quite understand the question.
Okay.
But I, I guess I agree in terms of, yeah, you can meet that and still provide the area for the stormwater detention. The engineer has designed this to meet the requirements of, of our stormwater ordinance, and there would be some additional land left over here in Unit 11. As I meant, as I indicated earlier, Unit 11 is about 108 feet in width, the problem is, is that its frontage is kind of clipped here because of the configuration of the, of the cul-de-sac, so, you know, could that be spread out between all the other lots? I suppose it could, but it would push Lot 11 a little bit further to the west and wouldn't have that frontage along the, the right-of-way.
And seventy-foot lots are very standard across the community, I know a lot of communities, for example, my house is sixty-foot lot, I think, but from my understanding, seventy-foot lots are very common throughout the city of Livonia, it's nothing, it's nothing different the most?
Seventy is common, sixty is common, eighty, there's a, you know, there's, as you know, there's a, a range of lot sizes throughout the community, but seventy is not uncommon by any means.
And then, some of the emails I've gotten, watching the meeting as well, the, the planning commission meeting, we talk about the, the width of the road, I know it says fifty-five foot right-of-way, and that would encompass the sidewalks and the right-of-way grass area and the road, but that road width is it pretty common amongst the community, I think it's like maybe thirty feet, give or take, or?
Yeah, the, the, the cross-section of the traveled part of the road meets the standard, certainly not the standard that was applied at the time in 1996, and if it's not at the standard of today, it's, it's very close, so it's, it's somewhere right around thirty feet, and, and I believe most streets are right around thirty-one feet, is what's required in the ordinance, but that's a, really a question for Mr. Zelinski.
Okay. Well, Mr. Zelinski, is that road width about, just about standard in the community, I know Mr. Toramina said about thirty-one feet, this is about thirty feet?
We typically like to see sixty feet, only, only concern I would have is obviously the sidewalk abuts next to the curb, so you want to push that back to have a greenbelt area for snow plowing, is probably my biggest thing, is we don't want to have, you know, once you plow the street, because it's very difficult to get back through there, have that snow against the frontage there, so we're going to make sure we have a, a greenbelt area for that snow to be maintained, and then typically sixty-foot is what we look for, but as, as the planning director says, you want to make sure you get two cars, it's parking, and somebody can get through their emergency vehicle, but...
And when you say sixty feet, again, you mean, you're encompassing everything, the right-of-way, the sidewalks, and the road, that's all combined?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Uh, thank you, Mr. Zelinski, thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Vice President Toy?
Thank you, if I made it, Ms. Toramina, Ms. Toramina, um, how, maybe you said it and I didn't catch it, how large are the lots to the east, frontage and depth?
So the lots to the east are about eighty-seven feet in width by 110 feet in depth, so they're ten feet shy of what the ordinance requires as a minimum, which is part of the reason, I believe, is why they're a little bit wider. It's, it's because the, the depth is not quite as much as it is on these lots, and it does, it's a little deficient by ordinance standards, but, but they are wider, they are eighty-seven feet each, most of them.
Yeah, because it's 120, right?
Hundred and twenty is the minimum, and these are 110 on, on the east side.
Right. And, and just lastly, does the petitioner, if approved, have to have a monument sign? Can we say no monument sign?
I believe they can waive the, you can waive the requirement for a monument sign.
Yeah, okay, I appreciate that, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, so just, I'm, quickly, on the topic of monument signs, when we do these developments that are technically condominiums, and they put up a monument sign, like the new development off of Farmington Road near Eight Mile, that we just completed, that monument sign there looks ridiculous, it looks, it's in the middle of the first front yard of the first home there, it does, it sticks out like, it looks awful. So whenever we can possibly waive these monument signs, I think that's, that's probably the good choice in regards to my opinion. Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President, through the chair to Mr. Toramina. All right, so if, if I'm looking at basically the site plan and the street, am I reading correctly that there's only four catch basins on the, on that current road?
Well, I'm looking at this landscape plan, and I count two here and two here, so that would be four on that part, on that portion of the road.
Sure.
That could, that, that may very well be correct.
And going with the thirty-one, I actually met a bunch of residents out on site, and I had more, and I used a GIS form, but it was more like twenty-eight feet was the size of the road, not thirty-one, it has mountable curbs. My issue with this is, it almost seems like the original development back in ninety-six didn't account for expansion, because why wouldn't you go for a bigger road? Now, part of this project, there is no enhancement to the current road, correct? There's not going to be any more catch basins added, nothing, this is staying as is.
Yeah, just, one point of clarification, when we, when you look at the width of the road, it's often measured from the back of curb, the back of curb, so, the reference to thirty or thirty-one feet was, was from the back of curbs, not, not the front part. So, and then your question, are there any improvements shown on these plans as it relates to the roads, there are no improvements relative to any additional drainage infrastructure in the road itself, nor, or, or changes to the geometrics of the road, if that's your question?
It is, and I, I guess, you know, with the, with the mountable curb, and with the four catch basins that, if I'm reading this correct, goes back in the rear lots of the current residents, it just, you know, when you're out on that site, you're going to add even ten or eleven new, new residential properties, each of those driveways is going to provide a sheet flow of stormwater runoff. Right now, the site's maintaining itself its wooded property, and so, has that been factored at all, of the new sheet flow that's going to be coming off of each one of these driveways, going into four catch basins that potentially have no escape but going in the rear lot of this current homes?
I'm going to punt and go to Mr. Zelinski, our, our engineering expert.
As you know, when we get the official plans from engineering, we want to make sure that there's no problem with having flooding, as we just dealt half million dollars' worth of work at Whispering Willows. The good thing is, there's a twenty-seven storm sewer that runs along that corridor, so again, there may be some additional storm sewer that may need to be added to the roadway itself, but in respect, whatever, because there's, there's capacity in existing storm sewer, you have a, a storm manhole at the curb up there at Sunset, as you go around the corner itself, we did some recent pavement repairs around there, but again, you may have to look at certain locations, depending on the setbacks here, parking sometimes may have to be in certain areas, you know, I don't want to get to the point where we, we approve this, and then we have to go, no parking on one side that may be approved and looked at by the city council now, is recommendations from the police department, too, because obviously you want to make sure we get emergency vehicles down there, and have to take a look at the, you know, the roadway looks crowded because you had the trees, once the trees come down, I think it'll open it up, but at the end of the day, we've got to make sure we have on-street parking, emergency vehicles, and allow for snowplow removal, as this is a very critical area, it's very difficult to get down there and start and, and have, don't have to get our guys stuck, and make sure we get people out and, and get emergency vehicles down there.
And then, the other question I do have is, I did read the planning notes, that fire would need some kind of an easement to come through, where would that be? I mean, where are we looking to have them have egress into that site, is that coming from the multifamily, or, or, you know, is that being bypassed, that was in their notes?
I'm not, I'm not aware of that, if you could...
I guess, and I'll, I'll review just to make sure, obviously we've got a little time before the regular, just in general, you know, while I love, like, the last plan, I, I think that the density and everything was good, it kind of was an innovative idea, I just, I look at this and I have issues with the amount of homes, with the, with the infrastructure not being in place, I have doubts, and it leads me to, to really have to look at this hard, because right now, it's just not driving for me. Thank you.
So, Mr. Toramina, in regards to the requirements of lot sizes, we discussed seventy feet just a few moments ago, that's the minimum, correct?
That is correct.
As a site plan petition, we can require a greater lot size, correct? Because it is a site plan petition, we are approving the site plan.
Yeah, I think if, if the council's justification for requiring larger lot sizes is, is based on findings that you agree on, or there's a consensus that is needed to make this a conforming plan, or one that's viable and compatible with the surrounding area, then I think, I think that is fully within your jurisdiction. Again, bearing in mind that, that right now, the plan meets those minimum lot size requirements, requiring something additional would probably have to be, there would have to be a basis for that in terms of, of the ordinance, whether it's engineering standards being complied with, and other, and other issues that are spelled out in the ordinance. Again, I, I just caution, when we make those decisions, that we find, that we, that we, that we have these findings before requiring certain changes that are going to exceed what our ordinance's minimum requirements are, and maybe that's a question for Mr. Bernier, quite frankly.
I completely agree with Mr. Toramina, if you're going to increase the minimums, there has to be a record made establishing the reasons why it needs to be increased. Because it does meet the ordinance now, and the council is going to increase it, there has to be adequate and sufficient reasons on the record for it.
In looking at this, and a lot of the views that were expressed tonight, I think it would make more sense in terms of, terms of a density from a water runoff standpoint, I, I think we, Mr. Toramina, you indicated that the, the depths of the lots run about ten feet shorter than is, is required, or is it?
Those are the lots on the other side of the street.
Other side, okay.
Yeah, these, these are 132 feet, which is ten, twelve feet more than what the ordinance requires.
Okay, thank you. Can I give Mr. Baran an opportunity, because he hasn't spoken yet?
So, in twelve years between planning and council, I've often said that I've never seen a development that the neighbors like. And there's been many times that, in doing our role in council, we have to do unpopular things, whether it be for legal reasons, whether it be for just respecting the rights of property owners' reasons, that the immediate neighbors are not in favor of, and I've done that, this council has done that many times. That being said, I have a really, really hard time with this one. Just speaking, you know, I suspect many of the people in the audience here are, are the neighbors that live over here, you know, I, I know walking this neighborhood, just campaigning, and thinking to myself, wow, this is a hidden gem in Livonia, I never knew was here, I've walked that street in October, in the fall time, I've seen those trees, I can understand the agony people are feeling with the idea of those going away. I love the fact that it provides the buffer with the industrial and the apartment complexes there, those are all good reasons, from a planning perspective, to leave this as is. What makes it difficult, and I talked to Mr. Toramina about this before the meeting, just to confirm, and Mr. Jolly asked a similar question earlier, what makes it difficult is that this property was rezoned by a previous council, but by the city of Livonia, from rural urban farm to residential years ago. That was the city signaling that this will be residential. The property owners have looked at investing in this property with that understanding. Regardless of what our personal preferences are, and how much difficulty we may have with this, this council has, has, in the not-too-distant past, in my opinion, made the mistake of voting based on preference, and is dealing with legal ramifications of that, when there's a piece of property that's been intended for something, and then this council's just said no, because we don't like it. For legal reasons, I think we, we have to approve homes being built here. So that, I'm, I'm only explaining this so people understand my rationale, it's not something I enjoy, it's not something I like, but I think we have to do that, so I'm just setting that aside and saying, this, this, in my opinion, will be developed. I think that, you know, Mr. Toramina and Mr. Bernier said that we would need a reason to require bigger lot sizes, that's my biggest concern, again, I think what Mr. Jolly said earlier reflected what I, what I'm feeling, is just, it looks like we're, we're packing homes in here, and my, my reasoning, and I assume this would hold legal muster, is, is compatibility with the surrounding area, we see that phrase in, in resolutions for developments all the time, and I think going to, for example, eighty-foot lots, I don't know what that means for number of homes, it would definitely be less than eleven, to me, makes total sense to say we want that in order to be compatible with the homes across the street. So, I can't, in good, based on the reasons I said earlier, as much as I want to, I can't vote to deny putting homes there, but I would not be in favor of this plan as it's, as it is in front of us now. So with that being said, there may be other resolutions, I would offer committee of the whole for the opportunity to revisit this, and maybe there's other resolutions people want to consider, or maybe the petitioner wants to, you know, depending how things go, there's different things he can do, but that's where I'm at, thanks.
I want to, I just, I've given you a few chances, I'm going to circle back to you again, I want to give the petitioner an opportunity, is there anything you'd like to say at this time, on behalf of Leo Sauve Building, and, and again, can you tell us your name, please?
Joey, the 328265 Mile Road. I know it's a touchy situation, you know, and I've been on both sides, I've been on your side, and I've been on this side, not, not here in Livonia, but in a neighboring city, however, I think a lot of times we lose the, lose the, I don't know, would like about it, whereas the idea of the legalities of everything, it's, it's, you, you hit it on, you know, Councilman Bar, that, and, and I've worked with Leo on this diligently to make sure that this meets and or exceeds all the requirements set forth by the city. So, one thing I think we forget about, and I'm not, I don't want to sit here and dangle carrot in front of anybody, but what keeps a community strong, and, and I'm telling you something you already know, but I just want to state it, what keeps a community strong is development, and then when it's fully developed, redevelopment, by bringing homes with children that go to school, which also keeps the schools strong. Correct me if I'm wrong on the amount, but I think right now, the schools get about $10,000 a child, let's say you have eleven, just let's say, all eleven have two kids, there's twenty-two kids, that's $220,000 that the school system gets, and a lot of school systems are right now are facing where people like, we're getting older, our kids are getting older, we're not moving, so there's less kids going to school, so there's less money to the schools, I, that's, I'm just, you know, re... That's, I'm just, you know, reiterating something that you already guys know, I'm not trying to give you a lesson or anything like that, so forgive me. I have a friendly issue, though, with two statements, if you don't mind me saying, I'm not trying to get into spitting contest with anybody, but the word jamming, you know, eleven houses, we're not, we're doing what the city is requiring from, for us. I forgot the other word, so. That's all, I mean, we, we've worked, Mr. Sovey's worked with the city many times, he's never done anything that would harm the city of Livonia. Thank you.
I'm going to go to you, one second. I just want to, so, the question I have here, right? The question is, if we have such narrow parameters in regards to approving or denying things like this, why is this even a petition before us under our ordinances, and why isn't it just something that can be built upon administrative approval? Because here's, here's the crux of the situation is, we're hearing from neighbors who don't like things like this. We may not agree with what we're seeing, but our hands are tied in regards to what the outcome might be, in regards to what we have to do per our ordinances. So, I'm just saying, that is a fundamental flaw of what we're looking at in terms of the obligations of this council. It is. So, if we have petitions that come before us, that we can't vote no on, that we have very little say in regards to what they are, it's a fundamental problem.
Well, it's not, it's not true that you can't vote no on it. You do have to have a good and sufficient and rational reason to do it. Just because the neighbors don't like it is not one of those reasons. It may be because of engineering problems, there may be several different problems that you have, detention problems, there could be numerous problems that would cause it, but just the fact that the neighbors want the green belt is not one of them, unfortunately. Or fortunately, but how you look at it.
Ms. McIntyre?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. We, we do have options. I mean, this comes before council for a lot of reasons, and it, it's not, it's never been a foregone conclusion for any project like this, that our only legal option is to vote yes. I really like Mr. Barr's, or agree strongly with Mr. Barr's recommendation, that he put this into committee of the whole. We've had projects like this before, and it is, as Mr. Bernier just stated, you can't, the cities not have legal standing to vote against something because neighbors don't like it. At the same time, we do have, and Mr. Barr expresses very well, some of the requirements are that things are in harmony with the surrounding area and the, and the other homes, or if it's a case of business, the other things in the area. We've, we've had projects like this before, we put them into committee of the whole, and we find a way that we can, that, that we can work with the developer to make sure that what we're approving is in harmony, but that it's legally defensible, what we're asking for. So, I'm, I don't feel that I don't have any option. I, I really like the idea that we put this into committee of the whole, as we have many other projects like this, and work our way through to something that meets the requirements that we set forth, and at the same time, is not an arbitrary demand by the city council that we have lot sizes or anything else that, that are not in alignment with our zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know there's been a lot of discussion about seventy feet or eighty feet and what's, whatnot. The ordinance is the ordinance. If they were asking for sixty feet, or fifty-five feet, and so on and so forth, I would, I would have a different opinion there. But they're asking for what the ordinance calls for, which is seventy-feet lots. What is the purpose of us having lot requirements if we're not going to abide by them, and we have to vote on them? If they're asking for sixty-five feet, or something that was not meeting the ordinance, I could understand that, but the homes across the street are seventy-foot, or, excuse me, N-two lots, and these lots are N-two lots. So, if they were a different width, I'd have a problem with it. To Mr. Zalinsik, in terms of stormwater management, because that's something I'm really passionate about, want to make sure that building existing, building more homes on the property doesn't create stormwater management issues. Now, from my understanding, look at the site plan, you've got the two bio-retention ponds on the side, and then the swale towards the back. And I know Mr. McCullough made a good question about the four catch basins along Sunset. Now, when you look at the plan, all the infrastructure is there, which leads me to believe that this land was always meant to be developed. The sanitariums, large sanitariums, right there, the storm pipes, your large storm pipes are right there, and the water lines are right there as well. But in terms of the, the catch basins, the four catch basins, is it pragmatic, or is it possible that the city could ask them to install two more catch basins? But my, my caveat to that is, I don't want to cause more issue to the existing road and the residents. So, from an engineering perspective, are you able to somehow bore underneath Sunset, installing, installing new catch basins, or stormwater catch basins on the roadway, to help manage some of that more water runoff of those driveways, without causing more issues to the road? Or they have to rip up the road portion right there, which would cause more issues with the, with existing homeowners there?
Again, we can do one of two options. If we ask for those catch basins to be done, then it may be feasible for the road to be removed or replaced, or we can bore it, depending, most likely, most people have been open-cut it because it's cheaper and more economical for the developer. But at the end of the day, we want to make sure that we have proper drainage. I think the grade goes from the north end to the south end, that's why all the, all the drainage goes to the low point on the far end, where the twenty-seven-inch storm sewer is at. So, again, the engineering department would have to look at the bio-retention area, make sure there's enough capacity in there to ensure that we have, we don't have a flooding issue. As you know, we've had a lot more intense rains, whatever. The worst thing we want to do is flood out the Apple Ridge Apartments, or we want to have an issue where the, the road is flooding, to have an issue. So, again, we've got to look at the calculations with the engineer as far as capacity on the existing surface, and additional capacity where the drainage is going to the rear of the property, but, and also look at the characteristics of the soil.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zalinsik.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President.
If the, okay, Mr. Barr, and then I want to go to the audience and give the, the people who've come out to speak.
Yeah, I just wanted to tick off just a couple of things that were said and just respond. First of all, I meant, I meant no offense when, if I said jam the homes in there, which I probably did, I often say that. Look, I, I hold no ill will towards the developer, trying to get, you know, as, as much out of the investment as possible. There's, there's no, no ill will towards that at all. So, if offense was taken with that comment, it, it certainly wasn't intended that way. I was just making the point that I don't, I don't think we need that level of density there. And then, as to all this stuff about the width, look, the, you know, Councilman Donovan asked, and what's the purpose of our ordinance if we're not going to abide by it? The purpose of the ordinance is to establish the minimum, not to dictate what the width would be. I think back to one major home development, probably about five years ago, that we dealt with here, and some of my colleagues will remember this, where we did, the majority of the development was one particular width, but the part of the development that was abutting the existing development, we purposely did wider widths in order to match the houses that they were up against. That's exactly what I'm suggesting that we do here. So, it's, it's completely inconsistent with the purpose of the ordinance, and I'll just, my last point is just reiterate that it absolutely is within the purview of council to, to push for plans that are compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. And I think doing less density here would do that, so I think that's all I got to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Mr. McCullough?
Through the chair to Mr. Zalinsik, just a quick question. So, when we typically do these, you know, the house plans on this, but there's an established road already there, is it part of the site plan and permitting process to provide stormwater calculations for the existing roads?
Typically, we exclude that, just for the new development itself, on the parcel that was developed. But again, we, we still want to make sure, again, we don't adversely impact it based on the grades, so depending on the final elevations and things of that nature.
And, and that, you know, like I said, I, I, I love working with, with development, but is this the right development? And when I look at this, and I'm not, not, I'm, I'm not an engineer in civil, but when you look at this, and the sheet flow of those driveways, it's not calculated into that. That water goes right to the back of the existing neighborhood homes, and even if, you know, that calculation, even if there was a stipulation to say, hey, we're going to require the contractor, you know, to, to do, perform a entire street assessment, it's not currently part of our permitting process. It's only for the site of the homes that are being built, and while that bio-swale, the bio-detention that, that goes on sides and, and the rear of the property, that's just for those new construction homes. That is not the sheet flow that's going to be coming into that road. And I just, you know, I, I was there, there's four catch basins, and even with the installing, any extras, you get, you know, fall time, you're going to have leaves clogging there, and then while the neighbors are probably going to go out there, they're going to, they're going to clear the drains, but next thing you know, you know, you get a heavy, we're getting more and more storms that, that these calculations are developed on, for the five-year and hundred-year rains. This wasn't developed, knowing that there's going to be eleven more homes. And for that reason, I, I can't, the way it sits, I can't support this. Thank you.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Mr. Zalinsik, could you tell me, in your opinion, after reviewing all this information, do you think there's enough runoff?
You mean, you're saying there's enough?
Just your opinion as a city engineer, do you think that we're looking at a plan that's going to work perfectly?
Just want to clarify your question. Is there enough capacity in the bio-retention system as proposed, or enough capacity in the existing storm system to the existing Sunset Avenue?
Both.
Again, I'd have to look at the C-factor of the detention area, but I would suspect, obviously, there'd probably be more in previous area added, once you add the home, plus the, the driveways, plus whatever area patios of that nature itself. But we want to make sure, it all depends on the size of the pipe and the slope of the pipe. So, there could be enough capacity, even though the pipe, like, there's only four catch basins, there may be enough capacity based on the size of the pipe. Typically, one side of that street has a two-foot inlet with a twelve-inch storm sewer that goes across to the main, main trunk line, and again, it just depends on the size of the pipe and the slope. In retrospect, I would want to make sure that we don't have any flooding back here, so we may have to increase the detention, which may, maybe shades off a lot, I'm not sure, as, again, you have to look at it in totality.
Okay, and what was the size of the storm that you said was out there?
I believe that the existing one was twenty-seven, it's on the south side. If you look at the intersection at Sunset Avenue, that's where, there's a storm manhole there. But I remember last, I remember a couple of years ago, I actually, because the trees were there, I actually remember having to clear the storm catch basin there because it was full of leaves, as Councilman McCullough had. But now, if the trees are gone, obviously, that's going to be a new issue, but still want to make sure enough capacity in the storm system to not adversely impact the flooding, which will be on the south side, because that's where the, the positive drainage goes to the south side of this location. And again, you probably want more, more detention, and more, ensuring enough capacity on that south end where the low point is at.
So, in other words, if the, if this development starts, and engineering determines that it needs another catch basin, or it needs a wider runoff, that would immediately be changed? Or do we have to make some adjustments for that?
Again, you guys are approving the site plan, we have to make sure it functionally works. That means whether it's a catch basin, additional detention, meaning Wayne County storm ordinances, developer will have to do that. You know, the biggest challenge would probably be, there's also sanitary sewer that has to be installed here, but I, I guess the biggest challenge would probably be making sure there's enough capacity in that bio-retention system to make sure, on a storm event, that we don't have flooding, and it's maintained properly by the homeowner association, if and when it's constructed.
Okay, thank you.
Could I say one more thing? Am I allowed to say one more thing?
Yes, and then I want to give the interested parties.
Yeah, to Councilman McCullough's concern. Now, you, you would have to check with engineering, but most of the time, when this development was done in ninety-six, I would be dumbfounded if they put a storm sewer to just handle those homes that are going in. Most of the times, when we do developments, even when we do new developments, but we're, we're going to do, like, in phases, most cities make us put in a storm sewer that's going to handle everything in the future, not just, not just one side. So, if, if you look at your master plan, and if this was zoned for residential, and then these guys came in, the other developer came in and put those ten homes there, I mean, you had to check with books and records, but I would say, I'm pretty sure that that storm sewer, you would have to do the calculation, but their storm sewer was put in so that we could handle what you're worried about in the future.
Council President, may I respond?
I really, I, I got to cut you off right there. We'll, we'll circle back. Mr. Ida, if you don't mind having a seat. Interested parties, I know some of you want to speak, now is your opportunity to do so. I would ask you, as, as patient as you've been, we're clearly interested in this, in the outcome of this, we're clearly taking this seriously. I would just ask you, please try not to be repetitive in nature with your comments. Give us the new points, kind of funnel them forward, so we can consider new information here. I'm just saying, for your time, and our time, and our consideration, please don't all tell us the same thing. Tell us new things if you can, and we welcome it. Please come on up to the podium, start by telling us your name and address, please.
Hi there. My name's Emma Chapman. I'm a kindergarten teacher, Livonia Public Schools, two-zero, two-three-zero, Sunset Street, Livonia, Michigan. I've emailed you all. You know, first and foremost, safety concerns. It's a narrow road, it's winding, it's blind. I worry about my own kid, I worry about everyone else's kid, I go to work, I worry about one hundred kindergartners all day, every day, but you know that. And I understand, this is a privately owned piece of property. I can't stop someone from building on property they own, but just because they can, doesn't mean they should, and doesn't mean this is the plan we need to go with. Eleven houses, I'm sorry, jammed in there, is not, is not the answer. Please raise your, raise your hand if you've had.
Ma'am, ma'am, with all due respect, the rules of the council indicate you have to address your comments to me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We don't, we don't like to do this.
Sorry, sorry.
Nothing good comes out of that approach.
I've.
Tell me, and everybody can hear.
We've all had water in our basement, and it's, it's a lot, and our street can't handle it, and I, it scares me what more homes on that street will do to my poor basement and my shop vac. Yeah. So, I understand, like I said, you guys, I, I understand, it's privately owned, you guys, your hands are tied, but I don't think this is the right development for the street. I, I like the solutions we're coming up with, I think that's great. I just think from, I think of my students, they're supposed to be able to write their numbers to twenty by the end of the year. When they get to twenty, I don't say, oh, great, I'm done teaching you for the rest of the year. No, I don't just work to meet the minimum, so, like, let's work together and let's find a better solution. I, I like the idea of maybe less houses, but I don't think this exact development is the right one for us and all of Livonia's residents. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Who's up next? If you don't mind, try to come prepared, and so we can go from one person to the next, so towards the end of one person's comments, if the next person would be approaching. Good evening, sir, your name and address, please.
My name is Donald Brockway, live at two-zero, two-three-four Sunset. Noticing the countdown timer, I'll try to read fast. Does this meet the updated zoning? Maybe. Should it? Probably not. Livonia Vision Twenty-One Plan has a goal to incorporate unique and functional community design components with all new developments. Outreach results for the Livonia Twenty-One Plan showed residents want to keep trees and green spaces and be provided affordable single housing. The Livonia Twenty-One Plan also states that preservation is important, citizen involvement is desired, and a sense of place should be part of the planning process. During the developer's initial start to his project, there was no information shared with the residents that the survey group was coming out until two men and unmarked vehicles began entering our yards and taking down several of the trees in the woods. As it is, trucks have to back up into our driveways because they can't turn around in this tight cul-de-sac. The residents of the apartment complex have also voiced their concern with the reduced green space buffer. We are in favor of the changes in the ideas you've made, so that it would be closer to what we have in sixteen-hundred-foot square houses, as opposed to two-thousand with smaller yards. The retention areas that have been suggested, one of those retention areas will back up to our neighbor's on the next street, and will be in her backyard with no fence in between it. The other one will be next to an industrial complex where runoff from their land goes into the woods as it is, and, and pollutes the groundwater. Why is it called condominiums if it's going to be single-family homes? I'm a little bit confused about that.
That's your time, sir. Thank you. Per the council rules, two minutes per person.
Thank you.
And I'll just note, some of the things that you're bringing up, council members may choose to address and provide some answers, or some guidance, or follow up with their own questions to the petitioners afterwards. Ma'am, your name and address, please.
Good evening. Juliet Abbott, two-zero, two-two-six Sunset Street. I emailed all of you, and I just want to reiterate some things and bring up some new things. The street on the other side is eight feet higher than our current street. As my nameer Emma pointed out. As my nameer Emma pointed out, we've all had water in our basements. I have a sump pump and a backup sump pump, it goes off every single minute. If we have more water, our houses will flood. As I pointed out in my letter, I'm not against development, I'm against this development. I pointed out three specific things. Number one, I am an art teacher, I teach children all day about art and aesthetics. 86 feet and 70 feet are vastly different when you look at them, they do not at all look the same. A 1,600-square-foot house and a 2,200-square-foot house do not look the same. Part of the Livonia zoning includes harmony in the neighborhood. This is not harmonious, this is not what we want. If we want neighbors across the street from us, we want them in houses similar to our own, we want them in lot sizes similar to our own. On that note, I read a study about driveways. If they are not directly across from each other, the odds of somebody getting hit by a car increases. We have 10 children on our street under five years old. This is a concern, because right now, no one can turn around on the cul-de-sac without backing up into a driveway, because the street is not wide enough. And it's not because of the trees on the other side, it's simply because the street is not wide enough for a turn radius of a larger vehicle. And also, just so you know, the streets do not get plowed. I know you guys are talking about street plowing, they do not get plowed. Our neighbor Ed plows the streets for us. So, we are a very tight-knit neighborhood, we are not against this, we're not against development, we're against this development. If it were seven or eight houses, we would be okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening.
Hi, my name's Angela Booth, I live at 20311 Milburn. I have lived here for 12 years, I walk and bike this neighborhood every day. This old-growth neighborhood is needed here, okay? I look at all the empty buildings in Livonia. If I have to watch this old-growth neighborhood torn down, it's going to be crazy, the amount of people that are going to move out of that neighborhood. Everyone is ready to put up their for-sale sign. Everyone moved there for this old-growth neighborhood. It's bucolic, everyone that, everyone that's walked it knows this. If you are interested in making money and dangling a carrot, do you know how much cannabis businesses give to cities? If you got busy and wrote your cannabis business, you wouldn't have to deal with tearing down old-growth neighborhoods. You could build all along that industrial stretch, building after building, you could turn the Ori Bakery into a provisioning center, we could be a template for the region. Don't tear down 200-year-old trees. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, your name, please.
Ryan Molnar, 20218 Sunset. I just wanted to back up, the fact that we were not informed of this at all. I came home to a survey company doing their thing, asking questions, conveniently waited until I left that afternoon to go in my backyard to do whatever information, so that kind of set me off wrong. Then upon the discussion of how many homes we wanted to place down this cul-de-sac, from 11, and we mentioned reducing the sizes in the homes, it seemed like it fell on deaf ears, that it was up to requirement, it's up to code, and that's, that's it. The fact that we're not getting any leeway really doesn't feel harmonious. It feels like what we have to say is not being heard or understood. This developer is obviously not about harmony, it's about money. And I understand, we're trying to get money in our city, and this is wonderful revenue, right? But when greed comes in, and we don't want to really agree upon things, we butt heads, and we have to come to the table about readjusting how many homes come. We're talking about our children. We have 10 children under the age of five. When you put in 11 homes, we guessed two years' development. He didn't say anything, he said, yeah, about two years. Could be more? How long is it going to take to rip out all of those woods? How long is it going to take to redevelop all those homes? You already went and took out trees, and now there's standing water from all of the storms lately. When you start developing, you're going to find these homes sinking. We have to deal with it already. More development, I find to be more problems.
Thank you, Mr. Molnar.
And safety as well.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, your name, please.
Oh, boy, here we go. Michael Doyle, 20210 Sunset Street, Livonia, Michigan, 48152. As you can see, I've been taking a ton of notes, so I'll do my best to try and make sense of it all. First of all, they've touched on most of my points here. The first thing I want to do is, is I do want to acknowledge that a person owns that land, that the person has the right to build on that land, although there was confusion when I called City Hall a couple of months ago about lot sizes and this and that. I'll get past that. But I also want to appreciate people on the council here who have dealt with me on phone calls, visits, emails. I've had a really awesome phone chat with one of you, and you know who you are. That being said, I moved here from Berkeley when I got engaged to my wife. I was born and raised in Berkeley, I had a great house there. I made the choice to sell my house and move here because of the idea that the city would have a, what's the term, natural charm, where I could take my son out, and I have a two-year-old son, and just yesterday, I took him out, and there was a deer there with her two little, you know, does, or baby deer, whatever the term is. I got to walk him out there and show him those deer. We keep cutting down trees, we keep taking out where all these deer can live, we keep taking out nature. And I want to have my son, and they talked about how there's 10 kids under five, in one month, I'm going to have a third one in my house, who's going to be born, and I want to give him an opportunity to enjoy nature. That's why I moved here. I wanted to live in Berkeley my whole life, and I know that you probably don't care about that. But I saw this area as a nice secluded opportunity. Last thing that I want to say is that there's a lot of confusion going back and forth here, and if it's right to vote yes. And the last thing I want to say on behalf of my wife, we think so long, if we could, we don't think if we should. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, your name and address, please.
I'm Paul Abbott, I'm at 20226 Sunset. I just want to speak about traffic very briefly. If you had the map back up there, excuse me, there's a single road that goes there, and if we have construction, trucks, cars, for people working to park on the street, it's just going to be congestion for however long it's going to be, and it's just going to be a mess. That's, everybody has touched on everything that I feel strongly about, so, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, your name, please.
Hello, my name is Sylvia Cowood, I live on 30892 Kenwood Court. And the reason I bought the lot to build the house there, because of the nature. I love nature, I walk there, I take my grandchildren, we walk, we enjoy it, we see the deers all the time. So, it's really, I'm not against anything, but it's, I would feel so sad if these trees are cut off, and then I see nothing but cars and retention pen? Behind, you know, when I look outside my, from my room, or from where I am in the backyard, I see retention pen, pond, so that's going to be not a good thing for me, it's not pleasant. So, I hope you guys consider this, and thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. I believe at this time, we have a motion for committee of the whole from Mr. Barr. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you back there, ma'am. Tell me your name and address, please.
Sofia Mircats, 30869 Kenwood Court. And I think Mr. Savoy, he wants to build too many houses, cut all the tree, and be not safety for the neighbors who already have their houses. And I think first we should take care about people, families, kids, the money and business. Mr. Savoy is very rich, he can build everywhere, just leave maybe this is for these families and for future kids. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. If there's nobody else, we do have a motion for committee of the whole at this time. There may be movement towards voting on that motion at the next council meeting on September 18th, the next regular meeting. Also, other motions can be offered at that time. So, if there's nothing further from the council, I'm going to move on to the next item. Thank you all for attending, we've heard you, and you'll, if you're interested, come back on September 18th for the regular meeting. Thank you. Item number four is an award of bid and request for additional appropriation and expenditure from the Department of Parks and Rec for the construction of a pavilion and concrete pad at Ben Chalani Play Area of Bicentennial Park from unexpended fund balance of the Community Recreation Fund. Good evening, sir, your name and position, please.
Ethan Engel, I'm the athletic coordinator with Livonia Parks and Rec. Thank you guys for hearing me. Better? Maybe?
I'm not sure it's you.
Well, I will try and keep this real sweet, we're looking to just add a pavilion out to Ben Chalani, it's going to be 24 feet by 34 feet, have some electrical components to it, really add to the park, we've done some really cool projects out there with the new playground, and this is just a budget amendment for us, is it's going to be a payback from Wayne County funds that we have, so would love to have that be proposed here for you guys to have a budget amendment, and then also recommend that we go with the KAB Enterprises that was placed on the bid there, so happy to answer any questions you guys have for me.
Vice President, Toy.
I'm going to ask for an approving, this park is just, every time you go by there, it's packed, and so this would only enhance it, you know, I think it's a wise move, thank you for bringing it up.
Ms. McIntyre.
I think it's lovely that we're adding something to an outstanding park. I'm wondering if there was any consideration given to using these funds to make some basic updates to Sheldon Park.
I know there's a park plan that's been, like, in the works, or we're trying to figure out what to do with Sheldon, but I don't know the exact answer as to why this park specifically was chosen over Sheldon, I can get back to you on that one.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't want this on consent.
Okay, Mr. Barr.
Is, this may have been in the packet, I'll admit, I've read the cover letter, I didn't go much deeper than that on this one. Is this replacing the shelter that's currently there, or is this in addition to?
It's in addition to it, so it will be where the walking path splits, it's going to be placed right in that area there, so just kind of northwest of the senior fitness equipment.
Got it.
Going right there.
Cool, thanks.
We have an approving motion that'll be on the regular agenda. Is there any audience comment?
I just, and thank you for being here tonight, you're the guy that drew the straw to come, and thank you for, and there's no problem in not having the information at all, we appreciate your being here. I just like the message carried back to Parks and Rec and to Mr. Davis, that we would like that information prior to the next meeting.
You got it.
Thanks for being here, it was a long meeting.
Mr. Donovan.
I just wanted to add, you know, I love the additions that we continue to make to that park, I mean, there's been a ton of work done there over the last couple of years. I know a lot of different vendors from the city, Rotundo Construction, and this entity and that entity, so many people partnered together to make this place what it is, the Chalani family, and Parks and Rec Wayne County and whatnot, so I'm really looking forward to this happening, and just kind of see the enhancement of that park there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ethan.
Thank you, guys.
You should visit us more often. There's nobody in the audience to comment, we'll move on to item number five. Item five is a request to waive the formal bidding process and extend contract with Havenor Tech from the Department of Public Works for completing all repair work required in connection with catch basin, storm sewer, and concrete slab stabilization in the amount not to exceed $50,000 from budgeted funds, citing Council Resolution 321-21. Mr. Rushlow.
Thank you, good evening, Council, Jacob Rushlow, Assistant Director of Public Works. This is an extension of our current contract with Havenor Tech to provide as-needed catch basin repairs throughout the city. Over the last four years that we've been under contract with them, we've repaired just about 300 catch basins using this technique, and it's proven to be both efficient for time and cost savings to us in DPW. Also, very impressed with their capabilities to perform outside of the catch basin repairs, large storm culvert repairs, and concrete slab stabilization for us as well. So, it's our recommendation through the DPW that council proceed to award this two-year extension to Havenor Tech in an amount not to exceed annually $50,000 from budgeted funds. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Ms. McIntyre.
Thank you for being here, Jacob. How many more, so you say 300 have been repaired?
Yes.
So, how many more do we expect to have repaired through this extension period?
So, with the dollar amount that we're doing, the $50,000, we can probably do, let's see, be about 90, off the top of my head.
And, may I, and how many, how many do we, how many additional need to be done?
That's a good question. We don't inspect every catch basin and storm structure throughout the city in every given year. We do it through the road program, through routine inspections, as we're doing catch basin cleaning with the sewer department, cleaning out debris that collects in the bottom of those catch basins as rainwater pushes debris down into the sewer. But across the city, we have about 26,000 catch basins. So, this is kind of a drop in a bucket, but it's a good tool for us to do this quickly. When we do repairs in-house, where we have to actually dig up a structure and remove the existing structure and then rebuild one, we can only do about 40 to 50 of those per year, and it takes us about three days per structure to rebuild it.
And then finally, one more, from the same vein. So, we're starting this work now in September, right?
We would, yes.
How far, how many more months can this work be done?
Good question, yeah, so, what I mentioned, like, when we do 40 or 50 a year, it takes us three days to do one. This company, Havenor Tech, with their technology, they can do all 90 or so catch basins in a day or two.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do I have any motions from the council? Mr. McCullough.
I'd be happy to offer an approving on consent, if there are no objections.
Thank you very much. We have no audience left, we have an approval on consent. Thank you, Mr. Rushlow.
You're welcome, thank you.
If there's nothing else, that concludes our agenda at this time, we'll go back to the council for any closing comments for the council. Good night, Livonia.